Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church to lead us in invocation. Is Jerry here? If Jerry's not here, I might ask Pastor Tony if he would mind leading us in prayer. Go that, step forward and lead us in prayer tonight. But I put Pastor Tony on the spot.
If you would bow your heads for a moment. Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for all that you've done for each of us. And it is our hearts desire that you would be glorified in this moment. May this gathering be representative of your heaven and our love one for another. Bind us together as your servants in this community. In the matchless name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Thank you for doing that, Tony. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, January 29th, 2018 to order. Sudi, if you would please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the January 29th, 2018 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment. You are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided the individual has filed a notarized affidavit with the city clerk that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with a person speaking. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Quite allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. We're excited to have you here tonight and appreciate you being here. If we could move on to the agenda, Sudi, if you'd please call the meeting agenda.
This item is the approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 18022.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend a change that we put, got a proclamation for our special guest here tonight. If we could move that to right after the approval of the agenda, if that's all right with the council. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Let's see here. So our first item, if you want, do you want to call it, Sudi?
This first item this evening is a proclamation recognizing the 110th birthday celebration for Elsada Miriam Duncan, evangelist, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Well, I would like to first off say that, and this is my 12th year as the mayor, and I believe three times I have attended a birthday party for someone 100 years old. One of them was, I believe Byron Foster's mother, and then Mrs. Allen over on Bethany Road, and also for Els- Ms. Elsie Duncan. Well, what I didn't really expect, and I think is very rare, was I got a call to come to her 110th birthday also. So at Ms. Duncan's 100th birthday, we danced. So it was really a pleasure and an honor to get to come to her 110th birthday. And that being said, we are, it's just very special tonight to be able to give a proclamation to her fam- herself and her family here tonight as being the oldest living citizen in the city of Milton, and we are definitely proud, proud to have her here. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and I think as I read it, everybody will kind of get a sense of how special. As I've kind of come to feel fondly call her granny, just like everybody, like the rest of the family. So, but I'll read this proclamation for Elsie, and then after that, we'll have the family come forward and with Ms. Elsie and get a picture and present the proclamation. So tonight, I'm honored to have, to have this proclamation recognized in the 110th birthday of Ms. Elsada Miriam Duncan. Whereas on January 15th, 1908, Elsie was born to Charles Duncan and Grace Ann Duncan in Brainerd St. Mary, Jamaica, the seventh of their 13 children. And whereas with Mrs. Dun- when Ms. Duncan was a young woman, she moved to Kingston, Jamaica, where she spent her time as an entrepreneur who started her own merchandising, dressmaking, and dressmaking business. Ms. Duncan and Charles McLaughlin were blessed with one daughter on June 19th, 1940. And whereas, Ms. Duncan was appointed as an evangelist in 1965. And whereas, Ms. Duncan is blessed with four grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. And whereas, Ms. Duncan migrated to the United States with her family in 1993 at the age of 85 and lived in Stamford, Connecticut before moving to Alpharetta in 1995 at age 87. And whereas, Ms. Duncan will celebrate her 110th birthday on January 15th, 2018. And whereas, Ms. Duncan is the oldest living resident of the city of Milton, Georgia. And whereas, Ms. Duncan is the oldest living Jamaican resident of the state of Georgia. And whereas, the city of Milton is inspired by her long life and offer her the sincere best wishes in continued good health, happiness, and overflowing abundance of love and joy. Now therefore, we, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton hereby proclaim January 15th, 2018 as Elsada Miriam Duncan Day. And that's given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 29th day of January 2018. Also want to, before we step down there, just give a handout to Elsie's family and how heartwarming it is. She still lives at home with her family. And it was just, it's, it's just very humbling and rewarding to see what a, what a great family she has and takes care of her, and I know she's a blessing to them. So you don't, not too many people are blessed with having family members for 110 years, but also get to live with their family and have them take care of them. So with that, I want to commend you all. That's a, it's a great example for, for all of us. So with that, if, if the council would join me and, and the family will step forward, and Ms. Elsie will give the proclamation.
So if you were on the back row, if you'll take a step back all the way to the wooden wall, the desk, there we go. Sit around. Everybody. Everyone will take a full step going this way. So take another step for me. You will, whoop. Step between the mayor and the councilman next to you. I'm putting you in between, that's perfect, okay? And then if, if you will step between the mayor and, right here. Oops, sorry, there, perfect, perfect, okay? Now, everybody tighten up just a little bit up here. Perfect, yes, I want to see, I'm gonna make sure I have all faces. Perfect. Are we missing anyone? Okay. All right, we're looking right here. Super. Here. One, two, three. Let's do this one more time. One right here. That's perfect, yeah. Excellent. Oh, wonderful, that's great. We're looking right here, we're going one, two, three. Let's make sure we have eyes open. Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Oh, I've got it.
Cards that we've got to give to Ms. Elsie.
Okay, I don't know if I can top that one. All right, so our next item is public comment. Do we have any general public comments, Sudi?
We have one, sir.
Public comment is time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Okay, Sudi, if you would please call the first speaker.
Our speaker this evening is Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese with Bromwell Reese &amp; Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, 3004. I'm here tonight to try to focus your attention again on the need to streamline the ability to create large lot subdivisions. I would really like to impress upon you the fact that time is of the essence in our community. I have clients that come through probably a couple of months that have large tracts of property. Typically, they're elderly and are either the heirs or coming through. And there is not time for five years in the future. And these tracts are 20 acres or larger, and perhaps they want to sell off five or 10 acres or something along that line. The case I have now, an elderly gentleman had sold off a parcel of land a few years back to help with some medical costs. We did this through a minor subdivision plat. He now has a 20-acre tract that he would like to split into two 10-acre tracts. When I relayed to him the fact that he had already used the minor subdivision plat, and per the ordinance, we would have to go through the major subdivision ordinance to create these two tracts, they would need no infrastructure, and the cost alone would be in the tens of thousands of dollars to perform the engineering and all the permitting process. After I got over his wrath and was able to explain to him that, you know, I was just the bearer of tidings, I would just love for there to be a way that you could go through and not revamp the whole system, but pick the low-hanging fruit, where we could get something in the near future where every parcel does not become one-acre lot subdivisions because of the structure that's in place. So if you could somehow find the time to look at allowing minor subdivision lots that are five acres or larger to be re-subdivided using the minor subdivision plat, or the fact that we could increase the number of lots in a minor subdivision plat where tracts would be larger than three acres, five acres, 10 acres, whatever your number is. I mean, it's inconceivable to me to, that we have a 100-acre piece of property and we can't go in and divide it into 10 10-acre lots without costing $70,000 or $80,000 in infrastructure costs when that is what we're seeking to do. So to me, that's low-hanging fruit. It's not something that has to be discussed and divided. I mean, it's either a good idea or not, not a good idea. If not, then hey, I'm here and we can do one-acre lots ad nauseam. Thank you for your time.
All our public comments, Sudi?
Yes, sir.
And just so the council knows, staff is working on these items. We're working forward, but appreciate the comment to emphasize the timing. All right, Sudi, if you could please move on to our next item, first item.
Okay, this is the consent agenda. First item is approval of the January 8th, 2018 regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 18023. Next item is approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and BIS Digital, Inc. for court recording software and equipment, Agenda Item Number 18024. Next is approval of a grant request for the acquisition of a second police K-9, Agenda Item Number 18025. The next item is approval of a renewal of a contract agreement between the city of Milton and Wanna Play Baseball, Inc. for the concession stand operations at Bell Memorial Park, Agenda Item Number 18026. Next is approval for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer engine pumper for Milton Fire Rescue from 10-8 Fire Equipment, Inc., Agenda Item Number 18027. Our sixth consent agenda item is approval of an agreement between the city of Milton, Crab Apple Merchant Association, and Promotional Mojo regarding responsibilities and obligations related to the co-hosting of Rock for Rescues, Agenda Item Number 18028. Next is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Firehouse Subs Foundation for the Management of the Bullet-Resistant Vest Grant for Milton Fire Rescue, Agenda Item Number 18029. Our eighth consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Barge Design Solutions, Inc. for T-Splosh Batch 2 Design Services, Agenda Item Number 18030. Next is approval of change order number one to provide construction inspection of FY17 Resurfacing and Reconstruction Project, Agenda Item Number 18031. Our 10th consent agenda item is approval of change order number one for construction services agreement for Milton Downtown Wayfinding Signage Project, Agenda Item Number 18032. Next is approval of a settlement agreement with Comcast Cable Communications, LLC for underpayment of franchise fees, Agenda Item Number 18033. Our 12th and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plat. Mark Brown Property Land Lots 998 and 1019, Arnold Mill and Ranchette. This is a combo plat, combine three lots into one lot, 22.75 total acres. The density is 0.04 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 18034.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'm moved that we approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Morick, for approval of the consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. If we can move on to our second report and presentation, Sudi?
This is an update from the city of Milton Cultural Arts Committee, Ms. Sarah Liddar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Bill Purdy, who's the chairman of the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. He's here to give an update. But the, just so, a little background, the cultural art committee was formed about a year ago, and you guys each get to appoint one person to that committee. We now have the full seven appointed, and Bill is here to talk about our plans for the future.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time to discuss the progress we've made on the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. And our thanks to Sarah, who has been a great help to us in guiding us through the processes of getting our committee together and functioning. Our committee began meeting monthly about nine months ago. And during that time, we have developed a plan for the arts for the city of Milton, and I'm here tonight to try to explain this to you. Our first task was to define just what is art? What areas of art do we want to address in our programs? And we've decided we want to deliver some educational services and display of the arts in four major categories. The first would be the performing arts. The second would be literary arts. Third, visual arts, and fourth, culinary arts, perhaps my favorite. To accomplish these goals, we need to do three things. We need funding, volunteers, and facilities. To raise funds for the arts program, we would like to create a 501(c)(3) corporation. This entity would not replace the Milton Cultural Arts Committee, but be linked to it. And the way we would link it, we would take the council-appointed seven members of the cultural arts committee and make them the board of directors of the 501(c) corporation. And that way, council would have access and visibility to that organization through our committee. The 501(c)(3) would raise funds for the arts in our city in the ways we believe would be private donations, corporate donations, event sponsorships, event ticket sales, and public grants. Volunteers, we will, will be sought by having a public forum. We've already found significant interest in this program, just anecdotally, over the last few months. A lot of people interested in the arts program, particularly since we're starting with a blank slate. In terms of facilities for the arts, we have to have a home. Planning for the facilities to practice the arts is a challenge because we have to plan for the future that's beyond our horizon. This will be a long-term process. Our committee's vision includes a facility that would be the finest facility in North Georgia and a credit to our community. We envision that facility would include a combination ballroom and banquet hall to seat about 300 that can be used for community meetings, local civic organizations, and private and corporate functions. We would also want a performing arts stage for plays and concerts, classrooms for arts education, and exhibit hall for art display. When we learned of the acquisition of the Milton Country Club, we thought, what a great combination of community services would be the arts and green space together. Another option is sharing facilities. Our committee was a stakeholder group in the Parks and Recreation Study that was done a few weeks back. There, we learned that Parks and Rec was considering the construction of an indoor sports arena. So we suggested sharing that facility. For a small marginal cost, we could add a performing arts stage to that. An example of this construction is the Kings Ridge Christian School, if you've ever been there. However, the near term, to start out, is we have to take the next step in fundraising by creating the 501(c)(3). The funding that we need to hire a lawyer, expenses, and a CPA is estimated at about $5,000. So in summary, what our committee is seeking here tonight from council is threefold. The first, your feedback on our plan with further direction and guidance for our committee. Second, a plan for some permanent facilities as a home for the arts. And finally, third, funding as council feels appropriate. But at a minimum of, but at a minimum of $5,000 to get the 501(c)(3) up and running so we can raise funds from that organization. This concludes my presentation. Any comments or questions?
Do you have any questions for Bill on that? Okay, Matt?
Kind of a legal one, from Ken's perspective. Ken, what would you think about appointed committee members from council being a board of director for a 501(c)(3) in connection with the city? I didn't know there should be some distinction between those, or if there's something about them.
Council members to be on this committee?
Not council members, but committee members, our appointed committee members being a board of director for a 501(c)(3).
I'm trying to think, you know, it candidly depended a little bit about what the 501(c)(3) was doing, but it sounds like it's going to be integrally involved in providing funding for some sort of city personnel.
Sure.
I would tread cautiously in that area, I don't mind telling you. I mean, in fact, it's funny, I was listening as he was speaking, and this is, you know, maybe something I need to talk with senior city staff on with respect to the requests being made here with respect to funding. But my original instinct is to say that there needs to be a clear line of division between a 501(c)(3) and the city government. That's not to say that they can't work synergistically, they can, but they are different creatures and need to honor their different lines of division because one of them has a much greater flexibility, the 501(c)(3) does with money than we do.
Right.
What I might suggest too is, is, you know, based on, on what Bill has presented to us, get together with Sarah, our staff, you know, the rest of our staff and Ken, and float those ideas around and come back with some, you know, give you some time to give us some recommendations on what we can and can't do, feel comfortable in.
I mean, Sarah, this is not the first time in my history of representing governments that a 501(c)(3) has, has, you know, anticipated being created that can in fact provide what I was considered almost auxiliary support to the government, which is what it sounds like this is proposing, and so I do have some history with this sort of thing.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say too, I mean, I was the president of a 501(c)(3) that worked very closely with city and county governments, building the friends of the Milton Library. So first of all, I appreciate your dreaming big on that. I think it's a good idea to do that, and that's what's required of a great committee to, to think about big future events. And so I think that's, that's exciting. We just want to make sure we do it the right way, so ask that question. So I think if we hashed out those details, I think we're heading in the right direction. My own thoughts.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, that was exciting. Appreciate you being, Bill and Bob, thank you. Okay, Sudi, if we could move on to our first presentation items.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 60 Vegetation to delete vegetation and replace with tree canopy conservation ordinance of the City Code of Ordinances. Agenda Item Number 18035. This was discussed at the city council work session November 13th, 2017. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A Fees and Other Charges of the Milton City Code to add Chapter 60 Vegetation, Agenda Item Number 18036.
We all move, I'll move to approve the first presentation items as read.
Yeah, sorry, all right, have approval for, or. Okay, sorry. All right, I have approval for, or a motion from Councilmember Coontz, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Suti, if we can move on to our public hearing, if you'll please call the first item.
These are alcohol beverage license applications, public hearing. First is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Aw Pan Crepe LLC, doing business as Aw Pan Crepe, 5310 Windward Parkway, Suite E, Milton, Georgia, 30004. Agenda item number 18-037, Ms. Sarah Ladarc.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bernadette is sick today, so I'm filling in, so please apologize, I apologize if I don't do this correctly. Aw Pan Crepe has completed all the appropriate paperwork and fees and such. They are on Windward Parkway, and they are in the location of the former Mambo Jumbo, and they are requesting an alcohol beverage license. Everything is good in the folder.
Okay. Any questions or comments? And I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 18-037.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for approval, second from Councilmember Morik. Just for the record, do we have any, we didn't have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. So, I'll close the hearing, but I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. So, Sarah, if you want to stay up here, and Suti, if you'll call the next item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of a limited alcohol beverage license to Just for Giggles, 12635 Crab Apple Road, Suite 250, Milton, Georgia, 30004. Agenda item number 18-038, and there is no public comment. Ms. Sarah Ladarc.
Just for Giggles is under new ownership, so they are seeking the limited alcohol beverage license of the BYOB for their establishment, and they, too, have submitted all the appropriate paperwork.
Okay. I'll close the hearing since there's no public comment, but any questions, or I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 18-038. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Morik, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti. And if you call the next item.
Our final, final ABL is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license and a limited alcohol beverage license to Mugs on Milton, doing business as Laurel and May Market, 12630 Crab Apple Road, Suite 120, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 18-039, and I do not have any public comment. Ms. Sarah Ladarc.
They have submitted the appropriate paperwork, however, they have withdrawn their application for the limited alcohol beverage license. They'll seek that perhaps in the future, but for today, they're just applying for the alcohol beverage license, and they have submitted all the appropriate paperwork and such for that portion of it as well.
Okay. Any questions, or do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-039.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jamison, with a second from Councilmember Longoria for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I've got a question, too.
Got a question?
Because the Agenda Item has the ABL and a limited alcohol beverage license. Do we need to modify the-
Yes.
To remove the item? Remove this item?
Okay, so we've got a second, we've got a second and a motion, so proper procedure.
I undo my second.
Withdraw the second.
Withdraw the second. And council, was it Morik that had the motion?
No, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Table's clean now.
Okay, so I'll open up for a motion.
So, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Agenda Item Number 18-039 with the amendment created by Ms. Ladarc, which is the removal of, what do we need to remove?
A limited alcohol beverage license.
Limited alcohol beverage license.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion as read by Councilmember Jamison, with a second from Councilmember Coontz. Any questions? Rick?
Are we actually withdrawing this item, or are you just withdrawing the alcohol license?
Right, so they still want the retail, so they still want to sell the retail, we're just looking further into the BYOB portion of that as well, so we're removing that at this time.
Just that portion?
That's what this motion is.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Suti.
Thank you.
Okay, Suti, if you'll please sound the next public hearing item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues and for other purposes. Agenda item number 18-010. First presentation was heard at the City Council Meeting on January 8, 2018. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I spoke with you about this a few months back, about how we were going to mitigate future risk of the property taxes being issued to, the assessments being issued late, like they have been for fiscal year 2017 or for 2017. And so, we've come up with a plan. We've talked with the auditors, the financial advisors, and even the credit rating agencies, and spoken with all the department heads, and also, you know, we presented you with the idea of changing how we account for the property taxes. Currently, they are accounted for at the end of our fiscal year, and if they are late, there's a revenue shortfall. If we don't meet the revenue shortfall, then we dip into fund balance. And there's really nothing, there's not a whole lot that we can do about a revenue shortfall. You can't, at the end of a fiscal year, stop expenditures because they've already been spent. The one thing that we can do is stop or delay an operating transfer over to the capital projects funds, which we'd be delaying some capital projects, and then we would catch up in the next fiscal year. Instead of doing that going forward, we decided that we were going to change from recognizing revenue for property taxes at the end of a fiscal year to recognizing at the beginning of the next fiscal year. This would allow us to then properly address any revenue shortfalls, if there ever were any, because of assessments, because we are then looking at the beginning of a fiscal year for revenues, and we're looking at the rest of the fiscal year for adjusting expenditures accordingly. So, what we're proposing tonight, and as I talked about it, for 2017, we got the tax digest about three months late. So, we kind of looked at this as an opportunity to better the future of the city. We looked at as an opportunity to change how we're doing business and mitigate the future risk of this happening again. We have to tighten up our belts for a year. We're dipping into fund balance for fiscal year 2017, which that has already passed. So, our fund balance at the end of the year would be about $3.1 million. Typically, our policies allow for it to be about $6.7 million. But we're going to build that back up over fiscal year 2018. We've got a plan in place. We're delaying some capital projects. We're delaying some of the MNO initiatives that the department heads put forth, and we're just tightening the belts a little for this year. And fiscal year 2019, we should be great going forward. So, what we're proposing is to, again, dip into fund balance for fiscal year 17, change our policies of how we recognize the revenues that is already being recognized in the audit that is just being performed by our auditors right now. And then, in fiscal year 2018, we're going to then recognize 2017 property taxes. Did you say something?
Stacy, just one thing I want to make sure everybody's aware of. So, our current fiscal policy dictates that we will replenish that fund balance within three years, correct?
It does.
I just want to point out that we've created a plan to actually replenish that within one, so it won't affect anything for us going forward.
Okay. Any questions on this, Rick?
So, is this more an accounting thing, instead of actually anticipating revenues and operating from those anticipated revenues, we're going to do, wait until we actually get the revenues declared?
Yes and no. I mean, we are saying that we're changing how we account for the property taxes, but if for some reason there's a major issue, say for some reason they're six months late in getting us the tax digest, we can withhold expenditures, we can slow some spending down, and control it that way, and make sure that we're accounting for everything properly, make sure that the city is safe as far as the funds that we currently have in the banks. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay.
I have a question. So, that, it gives us the ability to react instead of, you know, do things ahead of time rather than-
Correct.
Spend, 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 and then, oh, we didn't get it, and then, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Matt?
Yeah, so, obviously, this isn't a question, we're being prepared at our end, but we're not anticipating, are we anticipating any real problems with the counties actually collecting either funds? I'm not assuming so, but that's-
I didn't hear the last bit.
We're not anticipating the county to have any problems with collecting the full amount of the funds that they should have by law, right?
We actually collect our own property taxes?
We collect our own, but I mean, well, if there's a digest that will come into us, then that's according to the law and everybody working.
Right, we're not anticipating any issues in the future. I mean, we don't anticipate that, but we just prepare for it-
Right.
Just in case. So, I've not heard of any problems. I know that they are going through and still having to answer to the Department of Revenues, list of problems that they've got to correct before they approve the digest.
Okay.
So, we are still under the temporary collection order for 2017 taxes.
Okay.
But still waiting on the judgment on that.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing. Is there any other discussion, council, on this? Okay. Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues. Agenda item number 18-011. First presentation was at the City Council Meeting on January 8, 2018. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
I think that both of the presentations go hand in hand, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the fiscal year 18 budget.
Is there any question on the 2018? Okay, any public here, public comment? I'll close the-
No, sir.
Close the hearing on that. Okay, if we can move on to our zoning agenda. Suti, if you'll please read the zoning rules and sound the items.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances. In addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments, I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, an affidavit must accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your comment, please identify yourself by name and address. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 17-09 Text Amendment to Article 19 Crab Apple Form-Based Code 4.9 as it relates to parking. Agenda item number 18-008. First presentation was heard at the January 8 Regular City Council Meeting. This was discussed at the City Council Work Session on January 22, 2018. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, we discussed this proposed text amendment at a previous work session. Tonight's staff is recommending to change the required parking from use-based requirements such as retail, office, restaurant, or residential to an overall average requirement of 3.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet. We feel this will allow for a better design for the form-based code developments and eliminate over-parking, which we experience with our current parking requirements. The exceptions to this requirement are that single-family users will still need to provide two parking spaces per unit, and lodging uses such as hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts will still require one parking space per room. The proposed amendment also permits the community development director to grant a 10% overall reduction in parking by warrant. So, that is my presentation.
Okay. We talked about our work session. Is there any questions for staff or Kathy on this?
I have a question. So, we've looked at other cities, and we've derived the 3.5. It's slightly higher than the average for other cities, so you feel comfortable that, and I appreciate the desire not to overpark and limit impervious surfaces. I just want to make sure that in the future, we have enough parking, so you're comfortable with that buffer?
Yes, ma'am. We ear on the more conservative side based on the parking requirements in other cities, so I feel very comfortable with that amount.
And on the single-family uses, there's two spots per unit, and is there any allocation for visitor parking? Did that get removed, or?
That is not included in here, and it was brought up during our discussion at our last meeting, and we did bring forward the fact that the driveways for the garages are at least 20 feet in length, and that would adequately fit an SUV or a large vehicle.
And also, I see that you have, you have the ability to reduce the requirement. Could you ever foresee possibly wanting to increase it? If, I guess, my question is, as we go forward, how do we monitor how this, the 3.5 is going for us? What if you see that we are, we are underparked?
They were short, yeah. Well, then, we would certainly come back and ask for a modification to that, an amendment to the text, again, if need be. So, we'll clearly monitor this very closely. You know, we do look at shared parking, for instance, where businesses during the day can be shared at night with residences. So, there's lots of give and take in terms of looking at parking needs, and we monitor this for every development that comes in. And I do have that 10% warrant that I can give for a decrease in parking, but again, that's, we were very judicious in terms of how we allocate that out. It is done in a case-by-case, but we don't want to underpark either, so we try to strike that balance.
Anybody else?
I have a quick question. So, on Councilwoman Bentley's point, let's say Trader Joe's wants to come in, is there a way that you have to give them more parking as far as, or do they have to go through the zoning code and have to change it? So, I mean, is there any, can we give them more parking? Is there a cap on it, or is this just a minimum?
Well, this is, we would require 3.5, and so, what would happen is that if a restaurant or a store or whatever came in, we would use the 3.5 per thousand to park that use.
So, if they needed 3.7, though, is that's okay?
We could accommodate that clearly, yes.
I think the point, it's a minimum.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, right.
If the use, and they felt dictated more, they could ask for more.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Anybody else on that? Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing on that, then. Any other discussion on that? Now, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 18-008. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Suti. And if you would please read the next zoning item.
Item is consideration of RZ 17-10 Text Amendment to Article 20 Deerfield Form-Based Code 4.9 as it relates to parking. Agenda item number 18-009. First presentation was at the January 8, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. This was discussed at the City Council Work Session on January 22, 2018. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Sir, this is the same language for Crab Apple, it just relates to the Deerfield Form-Based Code area.
Do we have any public comment on that, Suti?
We do not, sir.
I'll close the hearing, but any questions for Kathy on this, council? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 17-10 Text Amendment to the Deerfield Form-Based Code as it relates to parking.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Suti. Thank you, Kathy. We'll move on to unfinished business. Suti, if you'd please sound the first item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend fiscal year 2017 budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues and for other purposes. Agenda item number 18-010. First presentation was at the City Council Meeting on January 8, 2018. The public hearing was conducted at this City Council Meeting, today's date, January 29, 2018. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Good evening again. I asked that you accept the presentation I just gave, and I will be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Okay. Laura, can you answer the question? Sorry. Then, is there any questions for Stacy on this, obviously? Then I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues and for other purposes.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti. Okay, Suti, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues. Agenda item number 18011. First presentation was at the city council meeting on January 8th, 2018. A public hearing was conducted this evening, today's date, January 29th, 2018. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
This is the last item, and I think this is probably the shortest budget presentation I've ever given. Enjoy. Actually, before we move on and ask that you approve the amendments, I want to give a shout out to the department heads, and I really want to thank them because they, they really took to heart what we were trying to do and accepted, you know, made some sacrifices in their departments. And I really appreciate it. They were super easy to work with and very helpful with everything. So I appreciate everything they did. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? If not, I'll open up for a motion. I'm going to assume there was no public comment.
There is not, sir.
I'll open up for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-011.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz, second from Councilmember Morik. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Suti.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. We'll move on. Suti, if you'll please sound the first new business item.
The first item is request for sur extension of four lots located contiguous to the Manor subdivision on Hamby Road. Agenda item number 18040. I do have public comment. Do we want to hold or do that now?
Mayor, can I briefly interject on this issue with respect to this one? And I want to advise the council of two points before I get started. Number one, I need to personally bifurcate or divide this issue in half in the presentation I'm about to make. So the first issue I want to raise to the council pertains to our own internal rules, and that's why I feel very comfortable talking about our internal rules. I've consulted before the meeting with the clerk. And in addition to any public comment we may have that is physically here at the council chamber, the clerk has, I believe, as many as perhaps eight emails. And some of them are requesting to be read into the record or what have you. And I only want to say that our rules really don't speak to this. I will tell you that it is a gray area in our rules with respect to how we treat the public comments of individuals that are not here. In my experience, I can recall situations where we have allowed them to be read in verbatim. I have encountered situations where we have read their position but not the substance behind the position, and read sort of their name and their address and their position, but did not read the content of it. And candidly, I think it puts staff in a little bit of an awkward situation when this comes up, to not have some certainty, sort of an in for a penny, in for a pound. We need to make a decision of what we're going to do on this at, candidly, the council level, and you all need to determine. And then we just need to stick to that every time, so we don't, we don't make different decisions on reading stuff into the record at different times. I can tell you our internal rules don't speak to this. If you were to ask me what our internal rules say, our internal rules talk about speaking, so therefore I would take the position they tend to anticipate a physical person here speaking live. However, this is a matter for the council. It's a matter of your, of how you want to approach this from a policy declaration. So I just want to say that before you start, if you all can maybe address that issue, if I may. When we get into the substance of this issue, I'm going to recuse myself from any further discussion. This is a matter that we had already retained separate counsel, Dick Carruthers, to provide an opinion. And I'm going to do that. If the council wants to move forward, I may approach you at a different time with respect to a conflict waiver, but I have not done that yet. And so therefore, I'm going to recuse until such time as I do that. So I'll leave you with this. We've got the internal rule issue that I would appreciate you all giving us some guidance on. And then when it gets to the substance of the agenda item, you'll need to defer your questions to perhaps the city manager. If you have legal questions, I'll have to get you another lawyer to handle those. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Joe, did you have something you want?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on that, Ken, just to make sure I understand.
Sure.
Which direction you're asking us to go. Not, which direction, which question you want to give direction from us on.
The first.
The, my understanding is that we're a little bit ambiguous in terms of what we allow being read into the record from citizens who can't be physically here at the meeting. And so in the past, I know we've done it, we've handled it several different ways. Sometimes we've read the emails directly. Suti is, or the city clerk has done that. And so they become part of the record because of her reading them verbatim. Sometimes we've just said there were 15 people that were for it and six people that were against it, or something like that. And so we've done it differently. You want us to provide direction specifically for tonight's meeting and this agenda item, what we want to do, and then at some point in time in the future, we need to amend our rules to be unambiguous when it comes to that?
Stated.
Okay.
Anybody?
Are emails that are sent in, whether they're not read in for the record, are they, are they part of the record?
They are, they are available by way of an Open Records Act request. I don't know exactly what Suti does with respect to those emails that are specific to an agenda item, but I suspect it's likely you may include them in the folder for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir.
Well, then, yes, they are part of the record, then, yes.
They're saved digitally, archived?
Well, I can tell you that whether or not an email is part of the record or not part of the record, if it is received by the city council with enough time before the meeting, I think, and I'll just speak for myself, I read that, I listen to what the person has to say, and take whatever comments they have under advisement in terms of how I decide or how I discuss the matter. So I don't know that being part of the record is, is material in terms of understanding what citizens' reaction, what their opinion is about a particular subject.
I would agree.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that? So I think, so Ken, you're kind of suggesting that we, moving forward, make a decision.
Well, for instance, tonight, we've got, we've got.
For tonight, you've got, what, about eight?
I would like to suggest that we take public comment from individuals that are here, and that we not require that our city clerk read into the record any of the emails that have been received on this subject, that have been asked to be read into the record. But I would ask that we just get a count of the number of emails, whether they were in support or not in support of the subject.
And, and I'm fine with that going, going on a forward basis. I guess my only question would be if people's, if our, and if what we've always done in the past has been to maybe read them in, maybe not read them in, and if people sent emails today expecting to have them read into the record, you know, I, I don't know, because I'm kind of indifferent on today. I can go either way, but I think going forward, absolutely. I agree with Councilman Longoria.
So we're in a position where either way we go, we're being consistent, right? Because we've been inconsistent in the past. So either way is going to be good.
Correct.
For tonight, I'm in favor of reading into the record the correspondence that, in which they asked, and then we set this policy going forward as we, you know, the emails come in, each individual council member reads them and logs them that way.
My request, then, because I'm hearing a little bit of a difference of opinion, it may be appropriate, this is a procedural item on addressing this matter tonight, for there to be a motion and vote once you've fully had your discussion.
Okay, anybody else? Rick?
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd go along with what Laura and Peyton had mentioned, because we have not been consistent. I don't think we need to have Suti or the city clerk read any email that came in, but when someone requested that this be read into the record, maybe we listened to those. The other ones were just emails where people said, here's my opinion. But going forward, I guess I agree with what Councilman Longoria said is.
Mayor and City Council.
Let people understand what the position is, how council is going to handle it.
Okay, Joe?
So I got a question, Suti. How many emails do you have where the individuals have asked to be read into the record?
I have five in opposition that have asked to be read into the record, and four in support that have asked to be read into the record.
Is it, are they short emails? Are they long emails?
I would say 75% are short, 25% would be a page.
I'm, I'm going to move real quick, just so we can get discussing this, that we read into the record the number in support and the number against without reading the content of the email itself.
Do we want to read the name and address?
That's fine with me.
But before, before we make a motion, Laura, did you have a point you wanted to bring up?
I, I still feel like the content of the emails need to be read. Folks thought that they would be read since we've been inconsistent with this. So I think we just have to vote on it.
Okay. So we have a motion. We've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Now, is there any discussion on that? And that would be to read the name and add, the name and address of, and the position? Was that?
Right, that's fine.
What was?
Yeah, I'll go along with Councilmember, Councilmember Bentley, just because if it's been something that they have done in the past, and it's been expected to, I'd like to at least honor that and then move forward, not do that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second.
We do have a second? Okay.
Yes, we've got a second.
So let me just give a little bit of my rationale. I want to respect the time and the energy that every citizen is providing in terms of voicing their opinion with us on matters that we need to decide. But for those citizens that take time out of their day and show up here and stand in front of us and provide us with that feedback firsthand, I don't, I don't want to discount that. And so I don't know of a way of not discounting a person that's here themselves with a person who's not here. And I understand, I mean, trust me, everybody has scheduling challenges, right? And we all have jobs. We're doing our jobs every day. So I understand that you can't be at every meeting every week. But, and I'm not trying to minimize, I'm not trying to mute, I'm not trying to take away from those citizens that have any issue to share. But like I said, we all read these emails. The only emails that we don't get to read are the ones that show up after the meeting starts.
Right.
And so I would just like to recognize those citizens that have the opportunity to be here and prioritize their opinions and not diminish the effort that they're putting into being here.
Okay. All right, well, there's no more discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So I think that was, that passed forward to three. Okay, so direction, basically those public comments will, will be just read in, the, the name and address and the position, so.
Mr. Mayor, it may be appropriate, I think it would be appropriate, that we bring you back a modification of your internal rules, and let's actually memorialize this so that everybody knows exactly, and it's written down, what we're doing on this.
And I'd also like to suggest that we let our citizens know that as well, because I think if we've been operating in this no man's land, they, you know, we really need to make sure that they understand that we can't read letters into the record.
Mr. Mayor, with that procedural item having been discussed and addressed, I just want to state for the record that I'm the Forsyth County attorney as well. This does implicate, at least in some respect, Forsyth County in their provision of sewer. I will be recused this evening, and the city manager will have to take over the presentation. And depending upon what the council does, I will then address my position on this item later. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open up to the city manager. Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is, item is before you tonight pursuant to a letter received from Carson Development Incorporated specifically requesting the extension of Forsyth County sewer to four AG1 lots and modification of the sewer service map between the city of Milton and Fulton County pursuant to the amended Fulton County-Milton sewer integr governmental agreement. And it is also before you because you agreed to hear this. So with that, I respectfully request to ask Mr. Carson to come up to make his case.
Okay. Do we want to take public comment first? Do we have public comment on this in, in the room, Suti?
Yes, sir, we do.
Is council okay taking public comment first? Okay.
First one comes from Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1562 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Good evening, council. First of all, I just think it's ridiculous that this is on the agenda, period. Citizens have been very clear that they do not want sewer extended in Milton. Over 1,900 citizens signed a nine-point petition for smart development that stated that they opposed, and I quote, "any and all sewer extensions beyond areas where sewer is already permitted." And they further pledged to vote in elections against any council member that does not uphold the principles of this petition. Well, citizens fulfilled that pledge in the most recent election, overwhelmingly voting 71-plus percent for the candidate that pledged not to extend sewer. I ask that council honor and respect the will of the citizens as expressed in that petition and then in the November elections, and vote not to extend sewer to the five lots that are not eligible for sewer. Second, we all know that the Manor Sewer System has a checkered past. It has suffered from numerous financial and technical issues. The latest incident was the release of over 9,000 gallons of raw sewage into Chicken Creek. I know about this incident because I live on King Lake. I also own part of Chicken Creek. Coincident with this event, we had algae, huge globules throughout the whole lake for several weeks. At the Ebenezer rezoning, the resident in charge of the sewer system at the Manor spoke, and he recited all the many issues with that sewer system. Fulton County, or Forsyth County has actually banned community septic systems citing multiple and serious technical issues, some based actually on the events that have occurred at the sewer system for the Manor. The third point that I'd like to make is that extending sewer will set precedent. I know that the city attorney is going to say that it will not set precedent, but we know that the city attorney has to say that to protect the city. The council needs to look long and broadly when it comes to these sorts of issues. We shouldn't look at this issue in isolation. If we replicate this across Milton, we know that we're going to have a very different Milton than we have today. So precedent is very important. Fourth, the applicant is going to tell you that sewer cannot be extended beyond where it exists right now because Fulton County doesn't allow pumps and that kind of thing. I don't know if that's true or not, but even if it does, is true, it doesn't matter. And that Fulton County can change the rules at any point. So maybe we can't extend it with the rules in place now, but we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. And lastly, what I'd like to say is that this is another example of a developer that has not done their due diligence. We've seen this over and over again at council. They go, they buy land, they don't do their due diligence, and then they come to council hoping that council will fix their mistakes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Suti, would you please call the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey.
I don't know if I can read this without my reading glasses. Good evening. My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I reside at 255 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. I'm here this evening asking that you deny the request before you under new business agenda item number 18040. I also ask that this letter that I will read and/or reference as well as the meeting minutes, the action minutes from an August 11, 2008 meeting be spread onto the record this evening of the official proceedings of this evening. I request that the lots that are going to be discussed this evening, that all of them be denied. At a minimum, I ask that they be deferred until the special called meeting minutes from. from August 11 of 2008 can be completely reviewed. I'm not sure if the outside council that was hired to review this item actually reviewed the meeting minutes, items number one through item 11, agenda item number 08644, from August 11 of 2008. And I specifically reference item number eight and number nine, where it says the authority granted by this motion shall only have application to the Manor subdivision as platted on the date that this motion is approved. Again, this references 2008. And then number nine references, quote, "sewer service shall be prohibited for any new lots that are platted or acquired as a part of an expansion of the Manor subdivision within the City of Milton occurring after the date that this motion is approved." And again, as a matter of record, that motion was approved as of August 11 of 2008. Many of you that are, at the dais were there as a part of that, as was I on August 11 of 2008. The language referenced from that 2008 special called meeting, I don't know if it's been reviewed by legal, but I would ask that indeed it needs to be as a matter of legal review. I know that our city attorney had to recuse himself. The other council is not here, so unless that can be affirmed, at a minimum, I would ask that that item be deferred until we can affirm that. Separately, sewer extension is an issue that's been vetted many times in the City of Milton, and it's well-known that the majority of citizens do not want sewer extended to any areas that are not allowed to have sewer. It remains unclear as to whether any of the proposed lots not currently part of the Manor should be allowed sewer. Again, the language of the August 11, 2008 meeting needs to be reviewed in its entirety. At a minimum, and only if the unanimously approved language from the August 11, 2008 special called meeting has no bearing on tonight's agenda that's before you, at a minimum, lots one through five should absolutely not be allowed sewer because the letter from the outside council already makes reference to those being outside of the IGA. This information from outside council hired by the City of Milton makes it abundantly clear that those lots should not receive sewer at all. So that shouldn't even be a question this evening. To do anything other than to deny sewer on these lots would be to extend sewer, which is in direct violation of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as well as the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement between Forsyth and the City of Milton. I ask you, I implore you, to continue to uphold our IGA and not to extend sewer. I ask you to take this as a serious consideration. I know that you know what citizens expect. I appreciate your consideration. At a minimum, a deferral would allow for a more thorough review, but I would ask for consideration of that 2008 special called meeting minutes, and I will provide those to Sudi to have those as an official part of the record. Again, my request, as, as is true for many citizens, is that you deny the request before you this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sudi, do we have any more public comment on this item?
We do not have any more public comment present in the chamber. I do have the emails.
Okay, if you want to read through the emails.
I'm gonna read the names and the position and the addresses. So this is in support, Stephen E. Wench, 2640 Grassview Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. Next in support is William Lusk, 1355 Summit Road, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. In support, Tim Inlow, 13075 Bethany Road, Milton, Georgia, 3,009. In support, Debbie Mooney, 12995 Bethany Road, Milton, Georgia. The last in support is Carsten Peterson, 3160 Chinnery Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. In opposition, Scott Sawyer, 787 Quarter Path Lane, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. Next, in opposition, Wade Tucker, did not give his address, but Milton, Georgia. Next, David Damiani, 935 Post Oak Close, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. And next in opposition is Jason Cornell, 3195 Chinnery Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. And that's all I have.
Okay. So we will, that's all our public comment. We'll close the public hearing part of this and ask if council has any questions for Mr. Carson. So, Mr. Carson would like to speak.
Mayor, city council, thank you for hearing me tonight. I apologize for almost interrupting you. I was asking, going to ask a procedural question about how this was going to proceed, and that's now answered. I have great, I've been dealing with mayors and city councils and county commissions for 35, six years now. I have great respect for the very difficult decisions that you have to make, because you have to keep in mind, and I know every one of you does keep in mind, what is in the best interest of the city that you represent. What I have before you tonight is a proposal to reduce density and reduce the number of lots that I can develop on a piece of land I own. As city, as a city attorney and outside council have found, and what I knew from the day that I bought the entire tract of land is I knew that that property that was part of the Manor and remained part of the Manor was rightfully served by sewer. Now, Kathy, do I double-click on these? Let me see if I can figure this out. I have to apologize, I went to my 90-year-old engineer's office today to get him to show me how to put these on a thumb drive. There we go.
Okay.
And can I move that around? How does that move? Just?
You should be able to, let's see.
Just with a scroll bar?
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
There you go, okay?
Thank you. The PDF in front of you shows my entire property that I bought some three, four years ago. What is shaded in red was a part of the Manor. It is, in fact, still part of the Manor because what you see crosshatched in gray within that tract is a restrictive covenant that J.D. Brooks put on that property to pay for his sins across the street, moving creeks, doing all sorts of things he should not have done. I knew when I bought the property that that part of the property was rightfully served by sewer, and that right was confirmed by Forsyth County by letter. They said they had the right to serve it, that's been provided to you. Had I wanted to, I could have run sewer throughout those, that red shaded area, and I could have tried to serve the backs of the lots and reconfigured the part of the property that fronts on Thompson Road. I didn't do that because I know the City of Milton doesn't want that. I've been around here a long time. I've owned land in the City of, in what's now the City of Milton for over 30 years. I have a respect, I'll be before you again, I have a respect for what the Milton, Milton residents want. So, my business deal was the subdivision that fronts on Thompson Road. The part that I have left which fronts on Hamby is land that I am trying to do the right thing. Everybody here knows that sewer is the right answer for sewage disposal. No questions. Anybody that tries to argue that some little 9,000-foot, 9,000-gallon spill in any way compares to the thousands of gallons of sewage that leak from Milton septic tanks every day, every time it rains, 9,000 gallons, it doesn't even, it's a rounding error. The state confirms, informs that. I took a septic layout of this subdivision to the Fulton County Health Department in 2016, and I want to read to you what they said in their rejection letter. Connection, and this is from the State Health Department code, state, and I'll read it, and I had provided this to, to the city manager six or eight months ago when I made the first request to be on your agenda. Connection shall be made to a public or community sewage treatment system if such system is available within 200 feet of a property line. Or available in a public right-of-way abutting the property. Every lot that you're gonna see in a second is within 200 feet of a sewer line. The Fulton County Health Department will not give me septic tank permits for any of those lots. I hope you hear that correctly. I am going to make a constitutional objection that should you not allow me to tie into sewer, you have effectively taken my property rights away because I cannot get a septic tank permit for that property today. There is public sewer adjacent to and within the right-of-way immediately across the street from my property. If y'all would like to see that language, I'm happy to show it to you.
That's up to you.
That's up to the council office.
Okay. So, let me. So, now we have Milton attorney, outside attorney confirm, confirming that that part of the property that is shaded in red has the right to be sewed by Forsyth County out of the Manor Plant, which every bit of this gravity feeds, there are no pumps involved, it's in the right-of-way across the street, I just bore into it, very simple. What you see in this next exhibit is what I can do with the property. I can develop 10 AG1 lots on the property without any council action. I have to go through some subdivision process, but what you see in front of you meets the code of Milton. And if you count those lots, those are 10 lots. All of the lots that fit within the red part of the property are AG1, one-acre lots, and I still do the three that are off to the side on septic tanks, even though we do know that Fulton County will not permit those three lots to get septic tank permits. They've already told me that in an email. I can't submit this back to them. So I can do 10 lots. It's not the right thing to do with the property. I've made my money off the big chunk of the property. I want to do the right thing. I want something that, I understand what the Milton residents want, which is bigger lots, more space, a more rural feel. This would be less so. I'm gonna have to figure out which one this is, because I can't tell. What am I doing wrong here, Kathy? There we go. Oops, wrong one. Sorry, folks. What you see in front of you now is an eight-lot plan that has been reviewed by staff, including your fire department. That's an eight-lot plan with doing those remaining three lots on septic tank, if I could get septic tank permits. So I can do eight lots, no action by the city council. I have great respect for the pledges, the reason the City of Milton was created was to reduce density, was to not extend sewer. I get that. I've been up here longer than many people. But the spirit of not, of agreeing to not extend sewer was to reduce density. That's what your residents want, is a more rural feel and reduced density. I can do those eight lots, whether, without any action by the city council at all. You will notice on that plan that lots four, five, six, seven, and seven are compressed to fit within the Manor property. Those are gonna be narrow lots, they meet your code, they're in one-acre lots, but they're compressed, that will have a very different feel than what I want to do, which is this last plan. What you see before you is a spacious eight-lot subdivision on 26 acres. It's 26 acres and eight lots. It does serve those three lots that are currently not allowed to have sewer from the sewer line that's immediately across the street from them. It's not, I'm not running any new sewer lines. Um, there's sewer in the right-of-way and adjacent to the right-of-way immediately across Hamby Road from them. I appreciate you letting me speak after public comment, because I, I did hear that there were a bevy of, of emails that flew around today, and I appreciate the opportunity just to straighten out a few things. Y'all aren't correcting anything for me. I made a good business decision. I sold off the part that, that was the reason I bought the whole property to begin with. What I'm asking you to do is to do the right thing and do what your city, what your residents want, which is lower densities, fewer homes, and better environment. Send the water back to the Chattahoochee River where it should be to begin with, which is what Forsyth County does, where they treat it, they send it back to the river, or they use it to spray on your golf courses. This isn't a precedent. It may be a precedent for two new people on this, on the city council, but the Milton City Council has extended sewer many times in the past, multiple times in the past. This is not a precedent. And most importantly, if you don't let me tie into sewer, I'm in a fix. I've got the Fulton County Health Department, a state agency, which has been, by legislation approved last year, taken back into the state government, telling me I cannot get septic tank permits. If y'all tell me I can't tie into sewer, where do I go? That takes away my constitutional right to use my property, and rest assured, I will do what I have to to protect my right to use my property. I don't, I have not mentioned this once to any of you in the past because I don't want any of you to think that that's a threat, but I am in a real position of not having a solution. What I'm proposing to you is a reduction in the number of lots that I can do. It's that simple. Can I ask, answer any questions you have?
Are there any questions for Mr. Howard Joe? So, so I want to make sure I understand that you're asking for access to sewer because you're not gonna be given the opportunity to put in septic tanks for these parcels. Do you know if the parcels would support septic tank systems, first of all?
Every plan that you've looked at is a fully engineered, level-four, soil-supported, engineered, they work, okay? From, from an engineering standpoint, they work. The reasons that I'm asking for, for sewer, Councilmember Longoria, are more than just the fact that I don't have a septic tank option. That's one reason, but not the only reason. If you'll see the, the site plan that you have in front of you, the lot's bigger, I can save more trees, I give your residents a better product. That's really what I want to do. I've made my money off the other part of the property. I'm not trying to squeeze the last part of this out of it.
No, I understand that. I just want to make sure that, that I'm understanding what it is your- I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding what it is your dilemma is because it's one thing if you're asking for sewer access because otherwise the property couldn't be developed. It's another thing to ask for sewer access because you're being denied any other way to develop the property because of Fulton requirements. Now, I have a little bit of a problem with that because Fulton doesn't have any sewer up in that area. You're having to go to Forsyth County, so how is Fulton County weighing in on what you do with Forsyth County? I'm not real sure about that in terms of a requirement for you to tap into Forsyth County's sewer line. So that's confusing, but I just want to make sure that I understand you could develop these lots the way you want with septic tanks, but you're not going to be given the permit to do so from Fulton County.
That is, that is correct. That is correct. But it's also, and this is important, that, you know, I'm a developer, therefore I BS. I mean, that's clearly public perception. I've been up here a long, long time, and I really am trying to offer you something that's better for you, better for the city of Milton, and better for me because I get a more valuable, I'd rather do eight really good lots than 10 lots that are less good.
Can I just ask a question? And again, staff may not know the answer, and I know Ken can't weigh in, and again, if you have the answer, that's fine. If not, maybe we have to research because this has been brought up before, you know, the fact where someone has said that, you know, if there is sewer available, that the county may or may not allow them to do a septic system. I thought we hadn't looked at that before, and that was maybe not the case, but again, I want to get clarification on that.
That's a fairly general question, Ken. I don't think it's particular to this, not that I'm going to teach you the law, but I don't think this one is specific to this situation.
Right, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be uncomfortable discussing it until I present you all a conflict waiver and you all have that in front of you. I just don't have it for you tonight, so I think if you've got legal questions, I'm going to have to respectfully defer them.
Okay, so.
And I'll give you the best of my recollection is that it hasn't been an issue in the past. I do vaguely recall Mr. Carson forwarding an email. It wasn't anything of official nature, and I thought it was from the state, not from the county. And of course, the county, it's Fulton County that would be doing the, any inspections or anything along those lines with the, with the septic. But I think this came up during a recent rezoning where we had this exact same question in an infill rezoning, and I think it was determined at that point that that was not the case.
And all due respect, that's, I'm just asking a question, Mr. Carson, so that's not disrespect to you. From what I understand, just to clarify, part of your property that was shaded is legally, it's obligated to have sewer from the manor. It was already decided and the, our outside city attorney confirmed that. But there are the three parcels, the three lots next to it that do not have sewer and do not, are not legally have the right to sewer unless the council makes a change, but those could go on septic. But anyways.
I guess I'm just a little confused. I've heard you say a couple of times that I can do eight or I can do 10. If you don't have the approval for the septic system, it sounds like you can't do anything except the five that are already there.
I can certainly go do the part of it that's sewer.
Yeah, but you can't do 10.
Until I enforce my rights somehow, yes.
And you can enforce those rights against Fulton County as well for not giving you a septic permit.
That would go wherever it went.
Okay.
I've got one other question for the city manager. Do you know if the, those August 2008 minutes that were referred to in public comment earlier were part of the outside attorney's?
I don't know if he reviewed, I have them in front of me. I have to assume that in his legal search, he recovered those. I don't see anything in his decision that contradicted the, anything from that August 2008 decision. I mean, again, I have it in front of me if you have any questions about it, but I can't say for sure what Mr. Carruthers looked at.
Okay. One other question from Mr. Carson. The part of the 26 acres that's, that's not allowed to do anything, the darker gray shaded area, what's that, what's that area?
Are you talking about the, do you have that on your screen?
I don't have anything on my screen. There's a darker gray hashed area.
There it is. It's on there now.
Make sure that I'm understanding. Are you talking about this?
Yes, sir. What's the area of that?
I don't know the answer to that because I sold some of it, and it was originally about 12 of the 18 acres that I bought, but when I sold off the piece that is now tangled with preserve, some of that went with it, so I don't know what portion I still own.
Okay. Joe? So hypothetically, if we could give you permits to put septic tanks on these lots, would that be okay with you? Would that satisfy the problem?
On the three lots or the five? Well, I don't know that you, can you give me permits?
Well, I said hypothetically, if we can provide you with permits for septic tanks on the lots that you don't have, that you're not required, that, I'm going to mess this up. You've got some lots that by right are supposed to be on the manor septic system. You've got some lots that aren't. For those that aren't, if you could get permits to put septic tanks on there, does that address the problem that you're having?
Well, it only addresses part of it, Councilman, because it addresses the part of it about getting a permit so I can build something, but it doesn't address the part with, and that is that I'm trying to give you a better product. I'm trying to give you bigger, wider lots. I can go still do, if somehow y'all snap your fingers and you could give me septic tank permits for three lots, I can go do eight lots and just use the manor, I can compress the lot sizes, still staying above an acre, and I could still do my eight lots.
Okay, so.
But I want to give you bigger, wider.
I get that, but when I hear bigger, wider, and less dense, I don't hear it's the configuration that I have to have in order to put septic tanks on the property to make them work, and that's, that's what I think I'm starting here. So I'm just trying to confirm, the plan that you have that you think is the best plan, if you could get, can you get septic tanks on all those lots?
I can get septic tanks on all of the lots, but the, from just, are the soil, if your question is, are the soil types correct?
Right.
Okay. I can get septic tanks on all of the lots that don't have some red shading in them, yes.
Okay.
The red shading's the sewer, correct?
That's right.
Or three lots, three lots that you can get septic on, is that what you're saying?
That's right. And that's shown by this, by the previous layout, which shows the same eight lots, just with them compressed to fit more of them in the manor property.
Okay. Ken, I mean, sorry, Stephen. I don't know that it would be real intuitive for me if I was going to review a condition related to this property, to go back and read minutes from a meeting from 2008. That would not pop into my head as one of the things that I would need to do. Did we include either access to those materials for our attorney or those materials exactly as part of the packet that we gave him? Or did we instruct him to make sure that he reviewed all relevant documentation that the city may have access to in determining this issue?
I can answer that question because that just goes to what information was provided. I don't think that information was provided to that attorney, whether or not they looked at it. I don't know what they would have looked at other than what was provided to them.
Okay.
And I agree with you, it would not have been intuitive to scour 10 years' worth of minutes.
Well, I'm all for us doing the right thing, and the right thing is complicated in a lot of cases, but if we have not asked our attorney, the person who's supposed to be giving us legal opinion to review all the necessary documentation, then the opinion is going to be incomplete. And so I've got concerns about that. Now, Steve, maybe you can enlighten me and say, Joe, no, that's not the case. The opinion is complete, I'm sure of it, then we can skip that part.
Certainly can't say that, but I could read to you the 12 pieces from the agenda, and you might be able to determine that yourself. And I believe that the speaker that came up earlier, I'm only guessing, by the way, that the impact would not be that it would, it would provide the applicant any more sewerage, but less, and possibly have no access to it. I mean, I think specifically the item that was mentioned was sewer shell prohibited for any new lots that are platted or acquired as part of an expansion of the manor subdivision occurring or after the date the motion is approved, which was number 10, which would, of course, prohibit anything that was not already platted as part of the manor subdivision. That is what the, that is what the attorney reviewed off the original.
So I have a question. So the attorney can, in fact, that did this review, he can date the exact time when this parcel was platted to the manor with these, with this sewer?
So it comes off of Exhibit A, which he refers to, if you've seen in that letter, and that was actually one of our early issues, determining what exactly Exhibit A was. This was, this was not a neat and clean look back at documents. It was a mishmash of documents. So what he first needed to determine for us, truly what was Exhibit A, because it continually referred to Exhibit A. He came to the conclusion that Exhibit A was, I believe it was in the packet, but I know this isn't going to help you, but was the original, the original configuration of the manor, which the, we'll call it the southern piece off of Hamby, was, when it was platted, it was not platted to be developed, but platted to be the package station for the manor. Then obviously things changed, and that ended up over in Forsyth, so we weren't quite sure what they did or did not have a right to. In fact, I had, I had asked Mr. Carruthers, even after he provided his opinion, I said, I still don't understand. I understand that we can, I need to understand what we are obligated to do, and he in turn said we were obligated to do so. I can't say that he ever reviewed this 2008 minutes, and these are only the summary minutes. So I have no idea whether he had, whether he took that into account.
Rick?
Mr. Carson, could you tell us in that, I guess it comes from the, Mr. Carruthers, when he stated that you had a right to sewer in this area, how many lots could you put in there with one acre, one acre minimum under AG1?
I can do seven lots in that. I could have done 10 or 12 if I'd wanted to run it up to the Thompson roadside, but I can certainly do seven in that shaded area and leave three out. But let me, let me interject one thing. That plat which Mr. Gerard and Mr. Krokoff have seen, approved by Fulton County in 2005, shows the bore of sewer under Hamby Road to serve this property. Those are Fulton County-approved plans. So that there was ever any intent to not serve this property prior to 2008 or 2006, that's a 2005 set of plans. And that is the bore under Hamby Road to serve what I now own.
Go ahead, Rick.
So Steve, in looking at what the, Mr. Carruthers came back with, I just want to verify that staff's looked at, Mr. Carson said he could do seven parcels that would be served by sewer. Is that a correct number based upon what we look at the acreage and what's there? He actually could do seven one-acre lots?
I can't answer that question. I've never seen a site plan based on that, and I don't know if that shaded area is seven acres.
Well, I mean, from, and Rick, I mean, from what I was probably going to my next question was, from reading the legal opinion, he said he could get sewer in, let's say, lots one through four and maybe five, and it looks like your 10-lot plan, you're like subdividing or you're adding additional lots. So I guess to Rick's point, has the attorney said, sure, you can subdivide that to as many lots as, or you can add as many lots as you want?
Well, as I, I haven't been provided that legal opinion because it was given to y'all, not to me, but as that was explained to me, your attorney and councillor can correct me if I say this, was that any lot that was entirely within the manor property that met your code could be served by sewer? And on that 10-lot plan, all of those lots are AG1 compliant, have over an acre, and are within the manor property? I don't know if that answered your question.
I'm only quite frank here. I got a real issue debating this without legal counsel here, just to be quite frank. I concur, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we're a sedan with three wheels right now, and I know that the council is looking for legal guidance, and you can tell I am uncomfortable providing it, which makes it very difficult for y'all to do your job. I got to tell you, I mean, again, what you all do is up to you, and I mean that, but I would, to your point, council member, it may be that you need to defer this and get Mr. Carruthers here to be able to answer your questions.
You know, again, and I think, you know, we could certainly make a decision tonight, but I think we'd all be second-guessing it after the fact, and it may not be fair both to the applicant and the public as well as the council without, you know, if there are unanswered questions, which our city attorney cannot answer, I would agree with that, but. Matt?
I'm just going to agree.
Laura?
I have a, and I agree as well, so, but I do have a question about this 10-lot plan. Was it, why is, why was that not in the packet? How is it that this is the first that we're seeing it?
I don't believe that that 10-lot plan was ever provided to staff. I did get a copy of the 10-lot plan, but it wasn't, wasn't through, wasn't through staff.
Our staff has not looked at it to see that it's per our codes, our ordinances, because when you look at the floodplain and the proximity of the view shed, I question the 10-lot plan, I question the eight Plan B. So I'd like, you know, to have our staff as well as legal counsel help us along with this because I'd need to understand if the 10 lots that we're being told can be built, in fact, can be built.
And this is just symptomatic of when these plans change on the fly and staff isn't included in the change. It's, we don't have, the experts don't have a chance, and I'm not an expert, don't have a chance to truly evaluate the plans, but I do have, you had requested some blowups of some maps and things like that. If you're going to defer it, it's probably not worth wasting your time with it, but I do have Mr. Carson's Plan A, B, and what now I guess has rolled out is C with the 10-lot plan with the overlay of the stream buffers and the, I apologize, the, I forgot the area that the, in the crosshash area.
Mitigation covenant. So, and that, that too, for me, is very important. I'd like to understand what that is, what is prohibited in the mitigation covenant? Are roads allowed, buildings, swing sets, all kinds of stuff like that, to make sure that, you know, these 10 lots can be in fact built?
From the best we can tell, and now I'd like to Mr. Carruthers sitting next to me, we don't believe there can be any improvements in, within the red hashed area. Additionally, you have significant floodplain throughout the area where you can have improvements, but based on FEMA flood maps, you would have to have the first floor finished three foot above the flood stage, and that's a significant part of, now, a part of the area. Now, Mr. Carson does not show, at least in any of the plans that we could tell, that doesn't indicate any buildings within that, but it creates a very small area that you could possibly move that building around in.
Councilwoman Benly, may I address that briefly? There is in fact a bridge across that creek that was built before J.D. Brooks brought the property with concrete. Brooks brought the property with concrete abutments and steel beams. I've had many concrete, not concrete trucks, I've had many truckloads of rock go across that. That bridge will hold up anything. And it is all out of the floodplain.
You're going to bring the sewer over the bridge?
Go under.
You know, in all, you know, fairness here, we've been told, you know, and it's been stated that you could do 10, you feel that you can do 10 lots, but that was not official in the packet. Again, I think council may would like, would like to possibly have, you know, have staff research that as well as legal, to see if that's even an option, because at this point, you're proposing eight lots. Am I correct that, you know, that's what we're talking about? So if there is the top of the 10, there may be some more information that council wants on that. Rick, did you, somebody said?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, Mr. Carson, if we end up doing a deferral, and Mr. Carson gives that plan so that staff can actually better review it, and then at the same time, I think we do need to have legal counsel here, because we're trying to, we're just guessing right now. I think we need to have the things that we talked about today, have legal counsel flesh it out, and then come back and actually meet with us when we hear this again. That would be my suggestion.
I'd also like to, too, to clarify for all parties involved, the comment that we've heard before, but if we could go back and clarify with the county and the statement about if there's sewer within 200 feet of a property, you know, if Fulton County truly would not allow a septic tank on that, if we could clarify that. Matt?
The only thing I would add that we didn't talk about today was the Forsyth, you know, the Manor's sewer system. I talked to Curtis Weeks over at the Manor today just to see what their thought process was of that. I guess, from what I heard, Forsyth did a $2 million repair on their sewer system. So that doesn't mean that the Manor's thrilled that anybody would connect to it, but they recognized that they had those problems that did exist, but they did make changes to that. I think that's something that just needs to be brought up. But the way I'm seeing this, we have, the question, of course, is eight sewers, what you're talking about, and if the EPD is very restrictive, that means you can only get five, and if they're not, you can get in 10. And we just need the legal counsel to make those determinations. So I agree with everybody else up here. I don't think we can move forward until we have that down.
The only thing if I could add, so we're getting concept plans. These aren't engineered plans, though now it sounds like we do have some engineered work, which I'll ask our community development staff to see if they can leave with Mr. Carson to get some of that information. But ultimately, what comes back, unless it is further engineered for something like you would see in an LDP, it's going to be difficult to get all the measurements you're looking for to determine, especially on some of these lots that are so tight, whether or not it's going to be manageable. And I don't know what we may or may not have, but it just, that may be an issue, and this may take some time.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
If we were to defer it, what would your, what would your Druthers be? 30 days?
I think it also depends on the availability of the attorney as well. That would be part of the issue.
And that, quite frankly, was part of the delay here.
If I can ask for some help with that, as the city manager knows, I sent him the same letter that got me on this agenda. I sent him that same letter in June of last year, and I understand there was some uncertainty about how people can get things on the agenda, and I'm certainly not criticizing him at all. But this has been out there, it's been, and it's been out there for seven or eight months now, if not longer. I think our first correspondence about this was back in April of last year. So just love to move this along. I want y'all to be fully educated and fully informed, but the sooner we can do that, the better, for me, anyway.
If I could just clear up.
Appreciate that consideration.
So I received the letter dated from Mr. Carson for the extension of the sewer on October 6th of 2017. He, we told, what took the time was to find out what he was able to do by right, and we got that letter back from Mr. Crowthers on September 26th. So I just want you to, nothing needed to come before council until I got the letter requesting the extension beyond the original footprint. So I'll respectfully disagree with what Mr. Carson just said.
Okay. Anything else?
So staff, if we're all trying to do the right thing, we need to take the time to do, try to do the right thing. 30 days? 45?
I don't know. It's going to be, we'll reach out to Mr. Crowthers tomorrow and see how quickly we can turn this around, find out what he evaluated in coming up with his decision, whether included the 2008 minutes.
We need to put a date on it, I think.
Right, well, if we did, let's say we deferred it for 30 days, but two weeks from now, we realize that it's going to take, can we extend that procedurally?
Of course.
Yeah. And, you know, what's the council's thoughts on that? We deferred it for 30 days, and then, Joe, you got it? Well, I just hate kicking the can down the road, but at the same time, I've got, either way we go, if we made a decision tonight, it might not be the right decision for one party, and if we delayed the decision, you know, we might, you know, do something else that's wrong. I think it's better that we delay, because the more information we have, the better off we are. It's unfortunate that we didn't have everything available tonight, most importantly, the attorney.
So can I make a motion?
You can. Does anybody else, anybody else have any other comments? Not all open up for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer the request for sewer extension of the four lots located contiguous to the Manor subdivision on Hamby Road.
You want to put a time for that? Okay. And what would the 30-day date be the next meeting?
February 19.
February 21st.
February 21st. Which is less than 30 days, obviously.
Would you be willing to amend that to the specific date of our next zoning meeting, which would be the 21st?
Well, but let's just clarify, the 21st is only...
It's not that long.
Let everybody enough time, that's the question.
Is the 21st, too soon, and I respect, you know, love to get it back ASAP, but is the 21st enough time? Today is the 29th. And again, we don't know until you talk to the attorney, so.
It's certainly enough time for us to get back to you, to let you know whether or not it's enough time.
Okay. You know what, that's probably the...
And you'll have my information immediately.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to, you defer to the 21st of February?
Okay. All right, so we'll start over. Do I retract my, okay, so I retract my original motion and amend it to defer the request for sewer extension of four lots located contiguous to the Manor subdivision on Hamby Road until February the 21st?
For a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for a deferral until February 21st with a second from Councilmember Coontz. Need discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Sudi, if you would please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the Milton City Council to re-adopt the five GMA ethics principles for recertification to be a Georgia Certified City of Ethics. Agenda item number 18041. I do have one public comment. Do we want to take that first?
Recommend that?
That would be Mr. Tim Becker.
Good evening, council. Tim Becker, 1565 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. I support council's approval of the GMA Code of Ethics. However, I would remind council that ethics is not what you say, ethics is what you do. As you know, ethics is a very personal topic to me. I feel compelled to speak on this topic. An ethics complaint was filed against me with the state of Georgia. The trigger for this complaint is that I spent $99, that's right, $99, to upgrade my political blog. I was accused of operating an unregistered independent committee that was attempting to influence an election. As you know, the staff of the State Ethics Commission found I had not violated the state ethics law. In fact, the commission stated, and I quote, "After review of the complaint and completion of our initial investigation, commission staff was able to determine that the alleged violations of the Campaign Finance Act were unfounded," I repeat, "unfounded," or otherwise permissible under Georgia law. Unfortunately, I was not absolved of these charges until 5:00 PM on Election Day. For nearly four months, the ethics complaint was used against me. The intent was to discredit me and to silence me. It was alleged that I was under investigation for four months. In fact, three sitting council members widely disseminated this allegation. Two of those council members are no longer on council. One remains on council. It is my contention that misusing ethics laws for political purposes is itself highly unethical. I had to hire an attorney to defend my constitutional right to free speech, my right of petition, and the right to freely assemble. No citizen should have to do that. Fortunately, the citizens of Milton were wise to the shenanigans of certain politicians and made a choice in favor of clean government in the 2017 election. We will complete our quest for clean government in the 2019 elections. No citizen in Milton should have to defend their right to free speech, particularly from the assaults of city council members. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other public comments?
That's all, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you this evening a resolution to re-adopt the five ethical principles that are part of the GMA program for recognizing the city of Milton as a certified city of ethics. This has been an honor that Milton has enjoyed since 2010, and there are basically two components of it. One, of course, is for the council to reaffirm the five points that are in the resolution in your packet. I won't read them out loud, but I'm sure the council has read them. Upon affirmation of those principles, this will be bundled together with your ethics ordinance and delivered to GMA, and they will have their own staff attorneys or other personnel that review not only the resolution, but also the ordinance, and upon determining that it meets their minimum criteria, they will approve us as yet a certified city of ethics for another term. So I believe it is mine and staff's recommendation that upon your consideration of this, you approve the resolution in your packet.
Okay, is there any questions for Ken on that? Rick, okay. I will open up for a motion if there's no questions.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, that we pass the resolution of the Milton City Council to re-adopt the five GMA ethics principles for recertification to be a Georgia Certified City of Ethics. Agenda item number 18-041.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Coontz for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. You would please sound the next item, Sudi, under New Business.
Next item is consideration of a settlement agreement related to Board of Zoning Appeals' secondary variance V17-07 regarding appeal of site plan approval for 12455 Broadwell Road. Agenda item number 18042. I do have one public comment.
Okay, we're glad to hear that.
And that is from Mr. Roger Bauer.
Good evening, members of the council. Roger Bauer, 2020 Knightsbridge Way, Alpharetta, Georgia. I live on the border between the cities of Alpharetta and Milton, and I am a party to the proposed settlement agreement before you tonight. The settlement agreement before you strikes the right balance between development and preservation of property values and the quality of life for the adjacent residents to the developments. As some of you know, the language was painstakingly negotiated down to the last comma and phrase. Well, and I'm seeing some head nods here, so I think there's probably some agreement there. While a few months ago, I thought the ship of compromise had sailed, due to the hard work and compromise of all parties, we were able to arrive at an arrangement that I believe is fair to all. I encourage the council to approve this agreement. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you a settlement agreement involving the secondary variance V17-017. The subject piece of property is located at 12455 Broadwell Road. It is in the Crab Apple Form Base Code district and is also contiguous with our border with the city of Alpharetta. It was the subject of a secondary variance appeal. Mr. Bauer was one of the individuals as well that filed the appeal, as well as Alpharetta Families Enforcing Bearzoning, Inc., and others. And what you have in your packet this evening is, in fact, a settlement agreement that to say it has been gone over with a fine-tooth comb would be an understatement. This has been a labor of love, and I will agree with Mr. Bauer that it required a lot of flexibility by everyone involved, but I think the product of this has been a good landing place for all. And I don't know if the council wants me to go over the terms, but I will tell you that if you look in the packet and look particularly in the settlement agreement, you will see some plats. They tell a lot of the story. There is some enhanced buffering, there is the configuration of the development itself, and there are some stipulations as just sort of the kind of development, particularly the kind of development as it abuts up to the city of Alpharetta's border and those property owners that are contiguous to that border. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, again, based upon just a formidable effort by everyone involved, my recommendation is the council approve the settlement agreement as proposed, and we put this one to rest.
I want to just add a couple of comments and thank not only Mr. Bauer and your neighbors, our neighbors, our city of Alpharetta residents, but along our borders. And as you guys probably know, we care about you guys just as, you know, almost as much as our citizens, but we're all one big family. And, you know, I want to thank, I know we've had meetings, had meetings with other elected officials from city of Alpharetta, our staffs have met, our council has gotten involved, a lot of your neighbors have gotten involved, and also the developers gotten involved. And this thing's gone, you know, just hundreds of hours of work and whatnot, but I'm really proud to be here tonight, that we came up with a win-win, and thank you to everybody involved with that, that, you know, that's, I think that's what we all strive for. But it, I know it probably several times looked like it was derailing, but again, just a thanks to everybody here involved in the city, city of Alpharetta, your neighbors and yourself, Mr. Bauer, and as well as the developer. So thanks, you know, especially to our staff, put a lot of time in that, and so I'm just pleased that we're at this, at this point now. So I'll open up for comments, questions, or motions.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda item 18-042. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt with a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Thank you, guys. All right, Sudi, if you'll please sound the final new business item.
This is consideration of the following subdivision plats. First is Annandale Landlot 383 Fremenville Road. Final plat, 25 lots, 33.255 total acres, .75 lots per acre. And next is Kinsley Phase 1, Landlot 1049 on Webb Road. Final plat revision, this is 29 lots, 7.689 total acres, 3.77 lots per acre. This is Agenda item number 18043. I do have one... one public comment for this item.
Okay. We do have one public comment, you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll do. Get to call that person?
Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, Premier LaRice and Associates, doing business 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, 30004. I'm here representing the owners of Annandale subdivision. Just wanted to make myself available if there are any questions on this. We addressed all the comments that came through staff to arrive upon this final plat. So, just wanted to make myself available if there are any questions on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Here we go. Okay. Our plan reviewer is down with the flu today, so I'm filling in, so. So, here are the two final plats for consideration this evening. The first is Annandale, 25 lots, total acreage 33.255 acres, and the density is .75 lots per acre. The, the second one is Kinsley Phase 1, final plat revision, 29 lots, 7.689 acres, density 3.77 lots per acre. And these are the two plats. The, the one on the right is Kinsley in, in the blue, and the one on the left in the orange is Annandale. In terms of Annandale, this is a subdivision on, on the corner of Birmingham Road and Freemanville Road. This was, has received new ownership. The new owners came in and finished this subdivision. And you can see that the, the main entrance is off of Birmingham, I'm sorry, off of Freemanville Road. And these are just close-ups of the, it shows the entrance, close-up of the entrance off of Freemanville, and then the, the other end of the parcel. So, based on the submitted drawings and supplemental information, this final plat meets the requirements of the applicable city codes as they pertain to the development of this property. Are there any questions?
Any questions on...
Moving right on, then. This is Kinsley Phase 1. This is on Webb Road, down the street from the assisted living facility. And essentially, they are, the, let me see where it is here. Yes. Right in this area here, they are asking for an easement, a public easement. There is a sidewalk that runs along the, the front of these homes right here. These homes are looking at a green area over here. And after they put the sidewalk, and they realized that they needed to go back and revise this to show an easement. So, this really just reflects the addition of an easement in the subdivision plan. And that's just another showing that easement in there. And then, based on the submitted drawings and supplemental information, this final plat meets the requirements of the applicable city codes as they pertain to development of this property. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll open up for comments, questions, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 18-043.
Second. Okay. I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Hewitt with a second, from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. So, okay. Move on to reports. Anything council wants to report on?
I have a report, more of a question.
Question?
Steve, Scott Reese came up earlier in the meeting and commented about fast-tracking or getting moving on the stuff that we've been talking about with the relationship to the large lot subdivisions. Are we making progress there? What's our guesstimate on when we can address that?
Kathy?
Well, we've been working with Carter on this, and Carter has some text revisions that he's working on to bring forward to encourage these large lot subdivisions.
I'll get you a better time, and I'll, if it's all right, I'll send you an email with a, with a more concrete time than, obviously, than no time I just gave you. And just to get us on the right track here, we, not that it's an excuse, we have been a little, we have gone a little sideways in, in some of our planning right now because of some of the recent acquisitions and some of the projects that have come through. Doesn't mean that this should go by the wayside, so let me, let me get you more concrete.
All right. Yeah, and I, I just want to make a public, or a comment on that, just, you know, based on, on your comment and this discussion, just so the public knows. In fact, Mr. Reese had brought this up to us a while back, and we have been working with our staff, because, I think you even used the term as low-hanging fruit, but we kept seeing it. I know it would come to us, and we'd discuss with different people. It's like, wait, we're trying to do what you guys want, but some of your existing rules and regulations are making it tough to do that. So, our staff has been working on that, because, again, if somebody wants to make a larger lot, or combine two pieces of property, or, you know, do something less dense than they have to, we certainly, we want to be able to accommodate them for that. So, thank you for all your work on that.
And Mayor, just so you're aware, anybody that has come in to look to do any sort of, of major plats, we are letting them know that we have these types of, of things in the hopper to incentivize those larger lots. So, it's, it's just a matter of bringing this across the goal line.
Okay. Anybody else, council, have any questions, comments, anything? Laura?
I do. I don't know if this is the right time, but...
Try it, we'll see.
The Milton Equestrian Committee is sponsoring a Birmingham cleanup, Birmingham Park Cleanup Day this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And we've, I think they've got quite a few people coming out for that. Let's hope for some nice weather.
Yep. That was a perfect time for any kind of announcement or thoughts like that. So, okay. Then we'll move on to our staff reports.
Let's see. We've got several things going on in community development. First of all, we've got an application to rezone from the T4 open to T5, a, an application on 3.39 acres to construct a self-storage facility. And this is on Webb Road, essentially in between the subdivision we just talked about, which is Kinsley, and the assisted living facility. There is a parcel in the middle there that they will be coming in to rezone to allow for a self-storage facility. So, you'll be seeing that in the next couple of months. Next, we have a, a use permit application that will be coming forward for the, the private school. And this is on Bethany Bend. There's an existing school there. They're hoping to expand that, and as such, they will need to come in for a use permit for that expansion. So, that will be coming through. In, in addition, we have a request for a use permit. If you can visualize the Strawberry Fields parcel, just off of Birmingham, right at the roundabout there, the rear end of that, the rear portion of that parcel, there is a request for a use permit to develop 42 senior condominiums on that back four and a half acres. So, that will be coming through as well. In addition, for text amendments, you approve the first read for the zoning, I mean, for the tree ordinance, and that will be coming forward to you on the first meeting in February. In addition, we will be bringing forward a text amendment to allow for office uses in the T4, I'm sorry, the T4 zoning district of Crab Apple. And we continue to work on the Unified Development Code, and we're hoping to get a draft to you in the next couple of months at a work session. So, that is it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Chief Austin?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Since this is my first time being before you in 2018, I kind of want to let you know how we rounded out in 2017 in regards to accidents and our Part 1 crimes. For accidents, we were on target to finish with no increases for 2017. A little ice storm came through and kind of threw us off track there. We ended up 14 accidents over.
Those don't count, they only count half, right?
We'll re-figure those. However, on the injury collisions, we did see a 5% decrease overall in 2017, and an 80% decrease in fatality collisions. So, we're very pleased with that. We continue to track and work on our more problematic crash zones and concentrate in those areas. On the crime front, we had a departmental goal to reduce Part 1 crimes by 5%, and in 2017, we were able to reduce Part 1s by 12%. So, very pleased with those results. That's, includes violent and property crime together. So, and we ended up violent crime in single digits. So, we're very, very pleased with that. That's, that's kind of the flyover from 2017.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Just as always, we appreciate everything you and your team do. So, give them, give them our support. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And Bernadette, she couldn't be here due to unforeseen circumstances, so we'll move her staff report to February 21st.
I think that will conclude our meeting. I have a motion and a second. Okay. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous.